Meeting started this morning. Madam Clerk, if you could begin us with a roll call, please.
Councilmember Baines, Councilmember Brand, Councilmember Capriolio, Councilmember Olivier, Councilmember Quintero, Councilmember Jean, Council President Brandau.
Here. All right then. And this morning's invocation is from Reverend Paul McCoy, pastor of New Light for New Life Church of God. And so let's all stand, and after Pastor McCoy's done, we'll salute the flag.
Thank you this morning for inviting me. It's a pleasure and an honor for me to be here this morning. Let all of us momentarily bow our heads, please. Lord, we come to you this morning asking for your guidance, asking for your guidance of this governing council, that they guide our city in a manner that is right and benefiting to your people. We pray, dear Lord, that you will continue to place your loving hands over all of us, that we be a positive example of love towards humanity. And, Lord, as we move forward, we pray that you continue to protect us, secure us, especially the families of those that you have called to govern. Watch their families, give them joy, and give them comfort, that those who are guiding our city may guide it without the worry and the threat of something happening to their family. We make these prayers, dear Lord, always remembering your faithful servant, Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Adelejeance to the flag. All right, we have some ceremonial presentations this morning, and the first one is with SPCA and Councilman Long Jean is going to get to be introduced to a new friend here.
Jim, I apologize, because the last time I did this, there was a puppy, and it ended up, I did take it home. And it's from Max. And I was on the sofa for about three months. So I just want to let you know that was a tough decision. Welcome, our new District Attorney, Lisa Sotergaard-Smikamp. Thank you very much for joining us this morning. Thank you for those wonderful words, Pastor. Obviously, you know that we all need it in some ways. But to our partners, it is so eye-catching, I shouldn't be looking at the dog in the face, because I will be taking it home. But we have a great partner with SPCA and other wonderful things that they do. So we enjoy participating and supporting their work and then helping our animal friends. So I'm going to turn this over to you quickly and talk about the program a little bit.
Sure thing. Hi, good morning, guys. So I'm here from the Central California SPCA. My name's Thalia, and I brought my little buddy. She is a Spaniard terrier mix. She's about like three months or so. She's available for adoption. She's half-off, and if you guys are interested, you guys are certainly welcome to come on by. As you can tell, she's very rambunctious. She wants to get down and just pretty much run around and play. She's very playful, high-energy. If she came to us, yeah, you can hold her. You might have another adoption here. So she came to us as a stray. Unfortunately, there wasn't an owner that came by looking for her. So, you know, we put her up for adoption. Again, she's healthy, she's of good temperament, and we wanted to just get her a home. And like I said, if you guys want to come to the SPCA, please do so. We have many more like her that need a home. We also have horses. We have guinea pigs, rabbits, hamsters. We have all kinds of animals at the SPCA, quite a bit of animals that come in. And so anyway, like I said, you can go on our website and see the other animals that we have there. And then lastly, we also offer dog safety presentations, and that's very important for kids to learn how to be safe around dogs. Unfortunately, there was a dog attack. Two dogs attacked this lady on Tuesday, and her and her dog when they were walking home. And so we just want to make sure that we can, you know, be able to teach people what to do in a situation when they encounter a dog. And then I know it's kind of like, hey, well, she's a sweetie. I don't think she'll bite anybody. But it's definitely dog safety is very important, so we'll be promoting that in the schools. So if you guys have any teachers that are interested in offering a dog safety presentation, we offer that. We can do it at the SPCA, or we can do it in classroom presentations. So I'm available for dog safety presentations and pet care classes. So thank you so much for having us. And again, and this is Tanya, and little Tanya is available for adoption, yes. Tanya. Thank you.
Thalia.
Thank you so much.
Long, that little puppy was wagging his tail amazingly while you were holding. I think that's an indicator. Yes. All right. That's always a great high spot of the month when we get our pet of the month. The next presentation is the, oh, let's see. Oh, I think that's it. Is that it for today? Okay.
No, we have attendance awareness month to recognize today.
Where am I missing that? Oh, yeah, from the mayor's office. Yes. Renee, or you can handle that for us. I do, I need stronger glasses.
Hey, good morning, everyone. I would like to invite Superintendent Jim Yovino and Dr. Michelle Cantwell-Cofrere up to join me, as well as a very special individual, Denaldo Moreno. And if other partners would like to come up front, you're welcome to join us up here. Attendance Awareness Month is a nationwide event recognizing the connection between school attendance and academic achievement. The goal is to mobilize schools and communities, not only to promote the value of good attendance, but also to take concrete steps towards reducing chronic absence. Improving attendance and reducing chronic absence takes commitment, collaboration, and tailored approaches to particular challenges and strengths within each community. More than 40 national organizations are working in partnership on this event. We can all be a part of the solution by working together with schools, parents, and other community partners to monitor and promote good attendance. And, Dr. Yovino, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Councilmembers in the audience, you know, today you have perfection in front of you. This is perfection. This is what it looks like. 100% perfect attendance since kindergarten. Wow. So we're going to kick off a campaign with a poster of Denaldo's face, and we're going to say, this is what perfection looks like. We want every kid, and challenge every kid in the county, to be just like you. So congratulations to you, and congratulations to Mom and Dad. We know that he would not have made school every day on time if it weren't for both of you. So thank you so much.
Madam Clerk, if you could read the resolution, please.
Whereas consistent attendance is essential to student achievement and graduation, and our community is committed to dedicating our attention to reducing chronic absenteeism, with the focus starting as early as kindergarten. And whereas chronic absence, missing 10% or more of school for any reason, including excused and unexcused absences, or just two or three days per month, is a proven predictor of academic trouble and dropout rates. And whereas the impact of chronic absence hits low-income and children of color particularly hard if they lack the resources to make up the lost time in the classroom and are more likely to face systematic barriers to getting to school, such as limited or unreliable transportation, lack of access to health care, and unstable or unaffordable housing. And whereas chronic absences exacerbates the achievement gap that separates low-income students from their peers, since students from low-income families are both more likely to be chronically absent and more likely to be affected academically by missing school. And whereas absenteeism also undermines efforts to improve struggling schools, since it is difficult to measure improvement in classroom instructions if students are not in class to benefit from the instruction. And whereas schools and districts track, calculate, and share the data on how many students are chronically absent, so that the proper interventions can be delivered to students in need. And whereas all students, even those who show up regularly, are affected by chronic absence, as teachers must spend time reviewing for students who miss lessons. And whereas improving attendance and reducing chronic absence takes commitment, collaboration, and tailored approaches to particular challenges and strengths in each community. And whereas schools, families, neighborhoods, and community partners can reach out more frequently to absent students to determine why they are missing school and what would help them attend regularly. And whereas chronic absence can be significantly reduced when schools, parents, and communities work together to monitor and promote good attendance and address hurdles that keep children from getting to school. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Ashley Soringen, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2014 to be Attendance Awareness Month in the City of Fresno.
Superintendent Yovino, perhaps you'd like to say a few words? Maybe the student would like to say a few words. Yeah.
Some words I would like to say is, I'm surprised first, and nervous. Still am. Yeah. But to be honest, I really want to go hear my parents. They actually wake me up and just told me to go to school. And eventually, when they couldn't really take me to school anymore, they told me, they showed me the way to walk to school. There's that. But this is just a huge honor, and thank you all.
Right on.
Yes, congratulations, Denaldo, and Mr. and Mrs. Moreno. You know, you really are an example of the parents that we need to get our children to school every day. So thank you. Great job.
Fantastic. Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, we're on to the approval of some minutes for previous meetings. The first one is approval of city council minutes from August 21st and August 28th, 2014. Were there any changes to those?
There were no changes.
Do I have a motion to approve? Have a second? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. The next set of minutes to be approved is the successor agency. Those are approval of minutes from August 28th, 2014. Were there any changes to those minutes? Do I have a motion to approve? And a second? All in favor? Motion passes 7-0. We're now on to council member reports and comments, and Councilman Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to invite everyone to come Saturday morning to the Discovery Center. And we're going to have a cleanup day there. And that originated from our new partnership, which is kind of an old partnership, with the Junior League Women of Fresno. They're going to partner with the Discovery Center, as well as the City of Fresno. And we're going to have a, let's call it an edible garden in the rear portion of the facility, and we're going to upgrade the entire process, all the exhibits there over a period of time. So we'd love to have everyone come out and help us clean up Saturday morning about 9:00 until we're done. I want to thank KC 24 and 30 for being there at 5:30 in the morning Tuesday to celebrate the event of groundbreaking of the edible garden. So it's quite an event. We had a lot of support. We'd love to have more continued support. The second thing I wanted to do was ask that we adjourn today's meeting in loving memory of those that passed away 13 years ago, our public safety people, as well as the citizens of New York City and all those involved. So I'd ask that we adjourn the meeting in loving memory of those victims.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Councilman Olivier.
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank some people, because we're really experiencing a renaissance of sorts in parks in the 7th District. And as a lot of you know, it's a place that really depends on parks, yet our parks have been struggling. So there's been a real community effort, especially folks surrounding Radio Park and Einstein Park in the heart of the district. And I wanted to acknowledge some people. First of all, I want to thank our new Parks Director, Manuel Molinaro, who's come to this city and really jumped in with both feet and taken on a lot, especially again at Einstein and Radio Parks. Sarah Hamilton from our Parks Department has been excellent with her work at Einstein Park, Radio Park, Ben Rash from Code, Randy Manuel from Code, Steve Cox from Parks, Father Papas from St. George's Orthodox Church, and also Nick Marzulliano from Sam's Deli. They actually have community meetings, having community meetings once a month to talk about the situation out at Radio Park. And so I really applaud this, and our office is represented at those parks as well. Just fantastic work, way to step up to the community, and way to step up to city staff. And we have to acknowledge the work of our police department as well. Detectives Danny Kim and Chris Lee have been absolutely fantastic. So if this continues, we're going to see revitalized and reborn parks in the heart of the city. And it's my primary goal in my second term here on the council. So thanks to all, and a real good job is getting done in the heart of the city. So thank you, Council President.
Councilman Quintero.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to jump ahead a little bit, just to general administration, one of the items, and want to give early congratulations to Michael Lima. It only took you 25 years, Mike, but you've done good. You've done good. Good choice, Bruce. Excellent choice. Yeah. So congratulations, early congratulations to you. Don't forget the donuts, okay? All right. Also, coming up on September 27th, just wanted to remind folks that we're going to have our Second Annual Carnival 2014 at Mosqueda Community Center. And it's a Kids' Day event that, everything is free for the kids, and we target the kindergarten through 7th, 8th graders, and want to thank all the great work that Parks is doing to put that together for us. And last year, we had about 5,000 children show up, and we're hoping for 7,000 this year. It's a one-day event. It's a Saturday from 10 to 5:00. And also, I've been in touch with the folks at the Big Fresno Fair, and Mr. City Manager, they wanted me to thank the city for, you know, the cooperation with PD on providing the security that they've enjoyed really working closely with him. And also, the good job that Dell does every year, paints the curbs, cleans up all around the area, and they're, you know, it's like putting the best foot forward, and of course, community sanitation's there every night with their sweeping up the streets and everything. So they just really appreciate it, and want to thank you ahead of time, because they get busy during fairtime. So thank you so much. And they're looking forward to another big crowd. It's usually half a million people plus that go to the Big Fresno Fair. So they wanted me to relay that information to you. Thank you.
Councilman Jean.
Thank you, Council President. Bruce, just wanted to thank all the staff and SMG for their wonderful work this past weekend for the Western American Truck Show. Had a really great showing, you know, positively coverage as well. I'm probably going to bring at least the industry to do a quick presentation for us as to what actually happened. And they were talking about that actual business actually occurred in terms of doing the truck side of the big trucks, and, you know, those trucks are not cheap. So just want to thank all the staff for their hard work, and I think the city got really good coverage for that weekend. Thank you.
All right then. Screen is clear. I would just like to add that I watched a YouTube video this morning about 9/11, and it just put me in a lot of memory from what happened 13 years ago today. And the thing that I took away from it, and it seems to stick with me over the years, is that what a wonderful country that we live in, that can celebrate that kind of diversity and take that kind of loss and come through and rebuild and stick together. And I really appreciate that about our country, and I just wanted to say, God bless America. All right, we are on to the approval of today's agenda. Madam Clerk, have there been any changes to today's agenda?
There's been no changes.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve today's agenda?
No move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes 7-0. And now on to the consent calendar. We have a number of items on the consent calendar today. Would any council members like to pull any items for further discussion? Councilman Baines.
They'll pull out 1E.
1A?
E.
1E, okay. Councilman Capriolio.
Pull 1B, please.
1B?
Correct.
All right then. On the balance of the items, without 1E or 1B, are there any members of the public that would like to address any of the items on consent? All right, seeing none, I will ask if we have a motion to approve the consent calendar. And a second? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. All right, we'll come back to revisit item 1E. Councilman Baines.
Yeah, thank you. I know I talked to staff already, so I know Jennifer's going to do just a quick overview for me, just to maybe first answer, see if I can get all the questions answered that I have in their PowerPoint. So I'm going to let her get a chance to do that.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing us to make a presentation this morning. Jennifer Clark, Director of Development and Resource Management. This morning, we'd like to do, Cindy, can you put up the presentation? This morning, we'd like to do a brief overview of the Childhood Lead Poisoning and Prevention Program. This is a program that is offered through the California Department of Health. It is unique to California. It's one of the few states that actually has a specific program to address childhood lead poisoning in the home. It is awarded directly to counties, and the main purpose is education, outreach, testing, and remediation. And until recently, it could not be used for remediation, so we're really pleased that the new grant will allow us to use some of the funds for remediation. This was a change in the last year to the rules and the regulations. And it's specifically to serve children who have been diagnosed with lead poisoning that have been identified. So how does that work? The Fresno County Health Department is provided with information on children who have been diagnosed by their physician or by a hospital as having lead poisoning. And then potential participants are sent to the city for further evaluation. The DARM Department conducts testing on the residences and determines if the participant is eligible. And then if they are eligible and the residence is eligible, then we contract for the lead hazard abatement. Prior to the state allowing for us to utilize these funds for abatement, we used strictly our federal lead hazard reduction grant for the abatement. As you know, the federal lead hazard reduction grant is eligible citywide. It is specifically for any unit built prior to 1978 that has the potential of having lead-based paint. But the emphasis is on pre-World War II neighborhoods, those neighborhoods that have a higher concentration of lead in the materials that were used. As after World War II, the use of lead within paints became less and less, because it was very expensive. I can tell you personally, my dad bemoans the day that lead was no longer allowed in paint, because then they had to repaint their home more frequently. So it was an additive to enhance the life of a paint, but it was very expensive. And as we learned that there were hazards due to lead, it was reduced in the paint, and then ultimately, it was removed altogether. So we emphasize neighborhoods that were built prior to World War II. It can be used on a homeowner or rental unit. There are income limits for the residents of the unit, and the unit must have a child under the age of six to be eligible for the federal lead hazard reduction grant. The federal grant does require a 25% match, and the CLIP program, which you will be considering today, can provide some of that match for the federal-led grant. Just a little history of our last funding period. These are three-year funding periods for both programs. These are completed projects where we actually conducted abatement. You'll see that there are only seven from the CLIP program, and that is because they just recently changed the rules to allow us to do remediation on the homes with the CLIP funding. In the past, it has strictly been education, outreach, and testing. So the breakdown, as you can see, by council district, you see the highest concentration in District 7, followed by 3 and 5. And this is because those districts have the higher concentration of homes built prior to World War II, and obviously, other homes then built between World War II and 1978. So how will this grant be utilized? Over the next three years, we anticipate dividing the program equally over the next three fiscal years, which will be $145,490, which is what you're authorizing as an appropriation within the budget today, for a total grant award of $436,000 over the period of the program. So we just wanted to do a brief overview about the program, and would be happy to answer any questions. And I have staff here if you have details that I can't answer.
No, thanks, Jennifer. And that certainly answers a couple of questions. And I want to kind of give you, I know we talked to staff, you guys chatted this week, and to just give you a little background on what my main concern was, I wanted to make sure that they were addressed this time, with it being a consent item. You know, last time, we had this grant, we had a pretty big, in my district, we had a pretty big sign-up at St. Rest Baptist Church. Several dozen people came in, signed up for the grant, filled out the paperwork, paperwork's turned in, not a single person got a grant. And obviously, I know that's not the intent of the program. And so I wanted to make sure that as we pursue this this time, that those type of errors wouldn't happen. And that was back in, you know, in the fall of 2012, well before your time. So I totally understand that. But certainly wanted to provide you some background and history as to why I wanted some more information on this. So I got a couple of questions. You answered a few of them in your PowerPoint, but just kind of wanted to let you know what my issue was from, you know, a couple of years back, you know, this time, a couple of years ago, when we didn't get the follow-through. So really, what's the difference between this grant and the state-based grant?
So the CLIP, which is what you're considering today, is the state grant from the Department of Public Health.
Right. I'm sorry, the federal grant and the state grant, right.
The federal lead hazard grant is also a three-year grant. That will be coming up on a new funding cycle. We anticipate the request for release, excuse me, the request for proposals to be issued relatively soon. So we will be coming back with another request to the council to accept the federal program, which is the one that you're referring to in terms of going out and recruiting and ensuring that we have the right clients who are coming in and requesting that information or requesting that assistance. As a part of that program, we are required to provide and to submit our outreach activities. And so I think that will be really important, that we ensure that we're outreach to the right areas, to the right clientele, and then following up and making sure that we have the information that's required for the grant, so that we can actually provide the abatements within the homes.
So the difference between the federal grant and the state grant?
The federal grant comes from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. It's part of the Healthy Homes Initiative. And so it's a federal lead hazard reduction grant. The state grant, which you're considering today, is through the California Department of Health, and is specifically for children with lead poisoning. So it's a different pool of individuals.
Okay. No, I see. So on this grant here, the child already has to have...
They already have to have been identified, correct.
Identify with lead poisoning, okay. And so the prior federal grant was a little more, was broader, obviously.
It is broader, right.
Broader in scope, and also broader in zip code. I know it was, it could go all over the city, right?
Right.
Regarding the federal grant, the last one we have, are we still in the current cycle of the last federal grant, the one from 2012?
We are concluding that current cycle. We have not completed that particular grant yet. We're trying to finalize that. We have a number of projects underway currently, and we are attempting to ensure that those get completed prior to the end of that grant year. And then we'll be starting the new year.
And how much more do we have to spend in the current federal grant?
Okay, we have about $1 million left in our current federal grant.
A million? Oh, that's a lot.
Right.
And what was the size of the grant, the federal?
It was a $2.5 million grant. So divided over three years, that's, we have several underway. So usually, it would have been about $800,000 a year. So when we conclude this year, we'll have completed that final round.
Okay, we have about $1 million left to go. Okay, I know you don't exactly know what happened with all the sign-ups in a couple of years back, but I sure would like you to look into that on my behalf, because none of those folks got any help. And I guess I had a little angst when we're receiving another lead grant, and I know there's a difference as far as the children having to already have... to already have been in contact with lead and have lead-based poisoning, but if we didn't finalize and perform well on the last grant, then I don't know why we're accepting another one if we couldn't fulfill the last one all the way. Sounds like we plan to do that, so I want to, of course, allow that to finish, but that's my anxiety, like, I don't know what happened on the last time, and me approving another one, you know, I was concerned about that. So I'd like to kind of see what are the scheduled projects we have left for the remaining of the federal grant, so I can kind of understand how we plan to wrap, I plan to wrap that up and wrap that down. And who's gonna oversee this grant?
So the oversight is through the Housing Division. So our interim manager is Jack Robertson. Rick Helm is our Housing Rehab Specialist, who actually goes out and evaluates the homes and monitors the projects themselves.
Okay, okay. And what is the outreach plan that you have for this grant, the state grant that we're discussing now?
So we don't outreach on the state grant, because the clients have to be identified to us by the county health department as...
So you're a partner with the county, and they'll tell you who the clients are?
Right, right.
Okay, okay. All right, and how many, how much staff do we have that's gonna be involved with this particular grant?
We have one dedicated staff for lead hazard control, and then we have support staff who support with the requests for reimbursements, managing the files, and the administration of the grant.
Okay. All right, well, I think for the most part, that answers most of my questions. I'm still very concerned about the last lead grant, and of course, Jennifer, I understand that you weren't here during that time, but I am concerned about that. And I'm not exactly sure I'll support this item today with the last one, with it leaving a bad taste in my mouth last time, so I definitely thank you for asking, for answering the questions, and be curious here for my colleagues if there's anything. Thanks.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Oliver, how come you weren't gonna support it today? I wanted to hear that.
Well, my issue was, we had a federal-led grant a few years ago. We had a pretty big, like a mass sign-up at St. Rest Baptist Church in my district. A lot of people came and signed up, a lot of people filled out the paperwork. It went through a whole process, and not a single person got a grant. And that concerns me, and that situation has never been repaired. And I know Jennifer just got here, so she wasn't aware of that, so I asked her to look into that, but if we're receiving another lead-based grant, when we, the last lead-based grant we had, we really didn't perform that well on, in my opinion. I have heartburn about accepting another lead-based grant, although there is a qualifiable difference between, I want to say that there is a qualitative difference between this grant and the last one, but I think as a matter of principle, I don't know if I can support this one.
Would you have any interest in continuing this item until we find out the answer?
I would be okay with that. Is this time-sensitive, Jennifer?
Excuse me, because we are partnering with the county, the county has to accept the grant from, the state government has to show how they are administering it locally. To do that, we do need to accept this prior to the end of September, is that correct? They're anxious for it now. My understanding is they need to, we need to accept this prior to the end of September, which does give us an additional two weeks, if that would be necessary for us to find the original paperwork and to do some evaluation on whether or not those households could be eligible.
Their anxiety notwithstanding, it looks like we probably have until the end of the month.
You'll put it on the agenda for the 25th?
I'd be okay with that, yeah.
I'll second your motion.
All right, I make a motion that we continue this item to the 25th. Doug, do we have to make this time certain, or?
Does it have to be for a time certain?
Does, okay, so I'll make a motion that we continue to the 25th.
Second. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
We will allow the public any opportunity to talk about this issue, even though it's going to be continued. Are there any members of the public, any other council members on this item? All right, then we have a motion and a second to continue this item on September 25th. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That continuance passes seven zero. Now on to Consent Item One B. Councilman Capiolio.
Thank you. I had some questions about the relationship between the city and the county, and the well drilling and so forth, but City Manager answered those questions for me, so thank you. So I'd make a motion to pass One B.
And I'll second that motion. Are there any members of the public that would like to address Consent Item One B? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. So after Consent Calendar, we are on to General Admin. And Item 14-357, approve the appointment of Michael Lima as City Controller. Right on.
Good morning, Council President, members of the council. It gives me great honor and privilege to recommend to you the appointment of Mr. Mike Lima to the position of Controller. Controller is one of those unique positions that, especially in the strong mayor form of government, because the Controller does report to the City Manager, but it also has to be confirmed by the council. Mr. Lima was the top candidate out of a nationwide search. He has 25 years of municipal budget and finance experience, primarily with the City of Fresno. He started off in the Budget Office. He's been with the airport for a number of years, and I can tell you, the airport director is not thrilled with the choice, but has learned to live with it. Mike has done everything from budget to financing major capital improvements, such as the rental car facility out at the airport, the solar power purchase agreement. He's met with bondholders, credit rating agencies. In fact, we were kind of talking, he said something to the effect that, in a lot of ways, the airport is kind of like, from a financial and budget standpoint, it's kind of like having to manage a little mini-city, and I reminded him, except for the fact that at the airport, because of bond coverage, he had a reserve. But Mike is well-prepared for this position. He understands the dynamics of the strong mayor form of government, and even knowing that, he agreed to accept the position. So with that, Mr. Lima, if you have a few words?
Well, good morning. I am Mike Lima, and first, I want to thank the mayor and the city manager for offering me this position. I deeply appreciate the confidence that they have shown me, and I intend to live up to that trust for as long as I'm in this position. I believe you have my resume and my cover letter in front of you, so I won't reiterate my qualifications, but I will say that I'm enthusiastic about the opportunity, excited to be collaborating with a talented team in finance, and am ready to get to work. Thank you very much, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Michael. Councilman Capiolio.
Mike, I want to make a motion that you reconsider what you're about to do. And we'd love to have you stay at the airport, you're a vital team member, and I hate to beg, but I think the die has been cast, so congratulations.
Thank you very much, thank you.
All right. Really quick, excuse me, Michael, any members of the public like to comment on this item? All right, then, we have a motion. I will second your motion, Councilman Quintero. And all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Unanimous, Mike. Support seven zero.
Thank you very much.
All right, now we are on to General Admin, Item 14-370, Adopt a Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Fresno and the Fresno Police Officers Association. This has three different parts to it, and we will hear from Jeff Cardell.
Good morning, Council. Jeff Cardell, Personnel Services Director, and I'm pleased to report to you this morning, as you know, that the city and the Fresno Police Officers Association for Units Four Basic and Unit Nine Management have reached a tentative agreement on a successor memorandum of understanding, and what's key about that is that this successor memorandum of understanding will replace the existing agreement. Substances provisions of these respective agreements include that the term will begin following adoption, and will continue through June 30 of 2017. Employees in these units will be contributing additional monies towards the retirement system, for current employees, an additional 2%, and for new hires, an additional 4%. We're making changes in terms of the health premium contribution sharing. Currently, the contracts provide for an 80/20 sharing of the monthly premium. That will be changing to 75% paid by the city and 25% paid by the employees. In the future, increases will be shared on a 50/50 basis until we reach a maximum of 70/30 sharing. There will be a six-month delay in the 2% wage increase that was due January 1st of this year, so that will take effect July 1st of 2015. We'll be eliminating the wellness program. With the health reimbursement arrangement, there will be limits on the number of hours of sick leave that can be deposited for new employees, and there will be a 2% wage increase that will take effect on December 31st of 2016. There's also a side letter to the agreements that provides for study of the retirement system relative to divorces and other legal separations, as well as meeting and confirming regarding performance evaluations. I'd like to take this opportunity to again reiterate that this has been a mutual agreement. It was ratified by both units, and I'd also like to take this opportunity to express appreciation for the support provided by the mayor, the City Manager's office, and the council in reaching these agreements. I'd also like to take this opportunity to extend appreciation to the FPOA leadership for their efforts in developing a mutual agreement that we can all look forward to over the next couple of years. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, we're gonna go out to the public, but first, I guess I would like to ask if Mr. Parks or Mr. Kurtz would like to address this item and give you a first chance to speak? And if not, we'll go out to any members of the public that would like to address this item before we come up to council. All right, then, Councilman Baines.
And I'll be brief, I just really wanted to, and I've said this to Jeff and Bruce as well, and wanted to say for the benefit of the FPOA leadership, Jackie and Damon, just great job. It's been my experience, the time I've been here, that this is not easy stuff. It's very difficult, and there've been a lot of fits and starts on both sides, and I really wanted to just really tell everybody that was involved, Bruce, Jackie, Damon, Jeff, and all the respective teams, that I know this was a hard deal and a long time coming, and I wanted to just say thanks to all the hard work and good job. I think that this, for all parties involved, this brings a lot of stability to this situation here in our city, you know, beyond just the fact that we reached this. There's a lot of stability that just happened with this, with the police department and with us here in City Hall as well, so just wanted to tell everybody a good job, and I know it was hard, so thanks, guys, for all the hard work.
Councilman Brand.
Thank you, Council President. I too want to thank the mayor, city manager, Jeff, Ken Phillips, for your role in putting this together, and especially Jackie Parks and Damon Kurtz for all the work they've done. And for me, you guys were talking to me, you know, last year and this year, about a really significant issue that you've convinced me that existed, that was the excessive attrition on our police force, and the timing that it takes. You simply just can't replace a person overnight. You've got to go to a police academy, you've got to do screening, and a lot of people simply don't make it. So thank you for addressing, which I think is a huge problem for the city, when we've dropped to perilous levels as far as public safety. And for me, who's been here six years and has seen this evolve, and I know at times where people thought there would be a clash of the titans, you know, sometime in 2015, I think that people, rational, smart people on both sides realize that the best solutions are always done in a cooperative way, and it's like a famous Englishman once said, "You can't always get what you want, but if you try sometime, you just might find you get what you need." And for me, that's what happened here, is that the timing in terms of where our budget's at, the significant problem of police attrition, and what this MOU does, it sends a message to the entire city, and I hopefully to all the police officers, that the city has listened to your concerns. We want, this provides a long-term stability, we're maintaining the competitive benefits and salaries that we have at the city, and I think that's really important, and from a strictly financial point of view, I know that Jeff had changed this sheet to $4.2 million, but in my opinion, the two programmed, 2% raises would have came. This is a net savings of $7 million to the city, and I really appreciate the sacrifices that our police officers are making on behalf of the city. And more importantly, this is something I had from day one, is to address long-term structural issues. One is healthcare, which has risen dramatically and steadily over the last five or six years, and I think nobody would argue that healthcare costs are gonna be lowering, so by putting a cap of 75/25, and any future increases at 50/50, I thought that was fair for both the employees and the city, and it gave us a better handle on that situation. And of course, the real big one was pension. When I came here, I believe in 2009, the annual cost for the general fund was roughly at four, five million dollars, and it's up to about 22, 23 million dollars. And by the change of all the new officers coming in at 4% less on their share of the pension, which I believe is roughly 20%, and you figure out, we're probably attriting 30-plus officers a year, you start doing the math, over the next 10 years, and all existing police officers on a 2% pension, because this chart only measures three years. If you measure 10 years, the, both cash and actuarial consequences to the city are huge, multi-million dollar savings, that will guarantee that we have the ability to, over time, restore the police force that's been dwindled, and our fire department too, over the years, that we can find a method to restore those services. And other things like the wellness program, which in itself is up to $750,000, this only shows for three years, but this goes out in the future years, and that's gonna save the city a lot of money. And again, I appreciate everything that was done by all parties together. I think it's, and the final beneficiary is the City of Fresno and its citizens, to rebuild our public safety to levels that are acceptable, and certainly, I feel good about it. So with that, I'll make a motion that we approve this item.
Second. I'm okay, thank you. All right, I would just like to add, when this item, when people found, in the community, found out it was gonna be on the agenda this week, I got called out on conservative talk radio, and what would Councilman Brandow do with this vote? And so I would just like to say, I too would like to thank all the parties involved, our FPOA leadership, and our city administration, and Jeff Cardell, especially from Personnel Development Department. But in response to that call-out, and I never responded on the radio, but there are things in this MOU where our police officers are definitely still giving back to the city, and they are not getting everything that they wanted, and we are not necessarily getting everything that we wanted. I think that's, doesn't that seem to be the way a good deal usually ends up? And I would like to add, somebody said on that show, "Well, why are you giving them a 4% increase?", and a lot of people in private industry have not seen that type of increase. The truth is, of the 4%, 2% was already scheduled, and that's, and they would have already achieved 2%. We're adding an additional 2%. At the same time, they're making, they are giving up several things that will help the city in a long-term structural changes. And I believe, at the end of the day, that's what our city needs, long-term structural changes with this MOU, and I think we've achieved it. So again, I just... So, again, I just would say I'm going to be very supportive today. I appreciate all the hard work. And I like the fact that not everybody got what they wanted. I'm not quoting the same rock star as Councilman Brand, but everybody got something that they wanted and missed on some other things that they wanted. But that is the, that's the deal that was struck, and I appreciate the work of all those involved. So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. All right. Now, we are on to City Council Item 3-A or 14-234. That's a bill for introduction, adding Article 6 of Chapter 5 to the Fresno Municipal Code prohibiting controlled substance use on city property. And that's sponsored by Councilman Brand.
Thank you, Council President. I had this out a couple of weeks ago, and I pulled it based on some feedback I had to make it a better and more, you never get bulletproof, but a little more, for example, I took out the, some of the areas included sidewalks, which we, I talked to the city attorney, we felt those areas were unenforceable. And there was a deal originally on possession, and since, you know, under a marijuana prescription, you could technically possess it. So, those changes were made, but what it does, it prohibits controlled substances, use of controlled substances, in city parks, buildings, sport venues, convention center, parking lots, et cetera. Because now, you can, you can't smoke at the park, but you could technically, and I'll explain it, smoke marijuana at the park. And what this does, it clarifies a lot of the ambiguities in both state and local law. I ran this by the PD, and they approved it, and I had Chief Dyer make some comments, and he was in full concurrence with this ordinance. In his words, "This ordinance preventing the smoking of marijuana in parks is because of all the confusion that the Compassionate Use Act has caused for local government." And that's our problem. We have a lot of conflicting laws. And there were, there was a letter from one attorney that said, "Well, this is addressed in existing codes on like loitering, drinking, but it does not specifically address controlled substances." There's also a Fresno Municipal Code 10-1101, which is the Smoke Pollution Ordinance, but it doesn't strictly prohibit marijuana or other types of uses, i.e. vaporizers and so on. So, this goes a long direction in clarifying that. And it also changes in state law, and state law is strictly by law enforcement. This allows city, other city personnel, like the parks director, to also regulate. And in reality, they're not going to go out there and arrest somebody for smoking marijuana. These are administrative citations. Now, this concerns all controlled substances. If somebody is doing meth or doing heroin out there, I'm sure there's going to be something beyond a civil citation. But this prompted me, was about, I think, earlier this year, there was a big smokeout in Woodward Park, where everybody was celebrating some law, somewhere, I guess in Colorado, about the ability to legally smoke marijuana. This is a public park with families, and they have rights too. So, you can still smoke marijuana, if you have a prescription in your home, in your backyard, at private places where they allow it. It simply says for both marijuana, as well as other controlled substances, they cannot be used in city facilities. And so, I'm asking for the council to approve this, and I'll answer any questions, and I make a motion and we approve the item.
Councilman Brand. We're going to go out to the public now. And Michael Green, you've turned in a card and come forward, and now's a good chance to talk. And if you, you did not need to turn in a card, if you'd like to speak on this item for three minutes, you can follow Mr. Green.
Good morning, members of the council. It's tough to respond based on the thinness of the staff report, and I acknowledge the comments from Councilmember Brand. But if the intent here is to clarify the haziness in the state laws, I don't believe passing yet another hazy law is going to accomplish that. I believe the city's existing smoking ordinance is written specifically enough that it would cover the smoking of cannabis, and I believe the smoking is actually the problem that would be cited and most offensive to people. I would note that there is, at least on paper, the existence of a medical marijuana subcommittee. There's been no outreach to the medical cannabis community. In the old days, we could treat pot like, we're just smoking pot, we need a new law, we're just going to ban it. Those times are gone. As a medical cannabis patient, I have a valid recommendation from a physician that allows me to use cannabis medically. There is no justification that I've seen in the proposed ordinance that would allow you to differentiate between somebody with a prescription of Norco or whatever in their purse, popping pills in the park, that is any different from the use of medicine in terms of cannabis. There are things like e-cigarettes and vaporizers, and I know that a lot of other cities in the state have started looking at that. So, without going too far into the specifics of the proposal, I would like to point out that there hasn't been any stakeholder input on this. It's kind of a moving target in terms of what the staff report actually contained. I would encourage you to acknowledge the fact that medical cannabis patients have equal footing with patients who use other types of prescription medications. And that the wording in the ordinance right now, because it says prescription, and because medical cannabis is not issued by prescription, it's by a recommendation that's legally distinct, that the effect of the ordinance is to prohibit the consumption of medical cannabis regardless of the form in which it's consumed. So, I would ask you to take the ordinance back, take a look at the things that are really bugging you, and if it's smoking, that's a legitimate concern. But your no-smoking ordinance gives you tools to deal with that. If they're not using that no-smoking ordinance because they don't think it applies, maybe you need to go back to the no-smoking ordinance. You have city facilities, you have other cities where they actually hold legitimate smokeouts, and they put the medication in a medication area where you have to get wrist-banded, just like you do for alcohol. We hope someday to be able to bring events to this city, maybe not on city property, but I mean, there's money there. We have a convention center that's underused. Anyway, we would appreciate more thought on what's going on here. We certainly would appreciate more stakeholder input, and we would like the Medical Marijuana Subcommittee, if it's going to exist for any meaningful purpose, it should be referred to that committee if there isn't going to be a meaningful purpose. So, I would ask you to disband it and be honest with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address this item? All right then, Councilman Olivier.
Thank you, Council President. I have a number of questions for the city manager and also for Councilmember Brand, who brought this ordinance forward. First, let me begin by saying that there's no way at all that I want druggies, or tweakers, or stoners, or drunks in the parks in the city of Fresno. Absolutely do not want that. However, this ordinance raises a number of questions, and I have concerns about the, how the implementation and how it will ultimately work, or as I believe will not work here in the city. The first question I have is for, I guess, whoever wants to answer it, the city manager or Councilmember Brand. Is it illegal to smoke pot or do drugs on city property as we sit here right now?
We have a smoking ordinance, and to the extent that smoking ordinance applies to property, then that smoking marijuana would be covered too.
So, smoking marijuana, if I understand correctly, is illegal on city property, including parks, in the city of Fresno as we sit here right now?
Parks are not covered by the no-smoking ordinance as it is right now.
So, as we sit here right now, city attorney, I'm to understand that parks are an open zone in the city of Fresno to get high and tweak and do drugs?
Smoking is not prohibited in the parks.
Smoking tobacco.
Smoking anything.
Okay. So, if I want to do meth, like my friend who came to my house last week, if I want to do some meth, it's a safe place to do meth in the city of Fresno, is on city property or at a park, because they cannot be penalized for that?
It's not specifically prohibited under current city ordinances.
Does state law trump city ordinances? So, I understand methamphetamine is illegal in the state of California. Does that, does that mean that it's also illegal in the city of Fresno?
Under state and federal law, using methamphetamine would be illegal.
Yes. In a Fresno park?
Anywhere, yes.
So, is it, would it be true to characterize that this is redundant? Explain to me, city attorney, why this is not redundant?
It's somewhat redundant, and it adds additional remedies. For example, asking the person to leave the facility and potentially banning them from re-entering a park if they've committed a certain number of violations within 12 months.
So, as we sit here right now, if a Fresno police officer comes upon someone getting high in the park, that Fresno police officer is not within the law to say, "Get out of here." He needs this ordinance to eject a druggie from a city park?
Well, the police officer would have certain powers, powers of citation and arrest. Specifically, just saying, "Leave the premises," I'm not sure that would be covered.
So, a police officer, obviously, when a police officer is out in the field, they have to draw on the information from the, that they're gathering from the situation. I know we have cops on the dais up here. They, they have to draw information from the situation that's presenting itself, and then make decisions of how to enforce the law. So, currently, an officer, I'm trying to establish, can an officer eject a drug user from city property right now without this ordinance?
So, if an officer finds somebody using illegal drugs on city property, is one of their options purely to ask the person to leave?
Correct.
I think they could. I don't know whether that would be specifically enforceable, though. That may not be one of their legal options, but they may get voluntary compliance.
Is there someone from the police department here that can answer that question for me?
Yes.
So, you can eject, as a cop, you can eject a drug user out of a park right now?
Listen, if, if someone is getting high in the park, state law allows me as a police officer to arrest that person.
Arrest?
Here, on city property, city park, and in the public.
Okay.
Health and safety codes will allow me that police power. The municipal, we are talking about a municipal code, but there's already health and safety codes that cover that.
Okay. Thank you, Member Baines. Former Officer Baines. Okay. What is currently the policy on alcohol in our parks?
Alcohol is prohibited in the parks except through the permission of the parks director.
Okay. So, have people ever brought alcohol into a park? And I guess, I mean, and anyone can answer this. Do people have beer at family picnics and birthdays in our parks in violation of city code?
I don't know. Perhaps the former parks director can help you with that.
If the question is, is it likely that people are bringing alcohol into a city park without the parks director's authority? Yes, it's very likely.
What's the remedy for that? What is the, what does the city do when someone is caught with alcohol currently in a park?
I believe there is an administrative citation that's available.
Okay. So, we can kick them out or give them a ticket?
No, ask them to get rid of the alcohol.
Oh, you ask for them to get rid of the alcohol? Okay. You know, I think that, I think alcohol is, has caused so many problems in our society. I think that alcohol is linked to shootings in our city. I think alcohol is linked to violent crime beatings in our city. I think alcohol causes DUIs and takes the lives of the, lives of the innocents in our city. And I think it's a tragedy that some people can't, that some people abuse alcohol. And that alcohol is recognized in our community and in our, in our, in the world, alcoholism is recognized as a medical problem. And because it's legal, it's dealt with as a medical problem. But when we have issues of drug use, drug use is generally regarded as a criminal problem and not as a medical problem. I just kind of wanted to add that in. I was curious about the alcohol use in the park. What about prescription drugs, Member Brand? If somebody is an abuser of prescription drugs and pops some pills at the park, is that covered in your ordinance as well?
Under the ordinance, they can consume prescription drugs if they have a valid prescription.
Right. Okay. So, they can, so does that apply to medical marijuana? There's a gentleman in the gallery who has a prescription for medical marijuana. So, if someone, if someone wants to do, get high on Vicodin, that's perfectly legal under this ordinance, but if someone has to smoke marijuana, for example, to combat a migraine or asthma while they're at the park, they cannot do that?
No, because marijuana is illegal under federal law. Physicians are not allowed to prescribe marijuana. They may recommend it. They have a First Amendment right to recommend it, but that's not the same as a prescription.
Okay. The ordinance states, and thank you, the ordinance states that it's important for the, to have the city's ability to control the negative effects to the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the city. I'm saying that the city is, I'm going to make the case right now that the city is struggling to do that right now. In the 7th District, drugs are pervasive. It's a tragedy and a shame that the people that I represent have to live where there are pot farms in people's yards, where there are meth heads pounding on people's doors in the middle of the night. This is a tragedy, and it's evidence to me that it's difficult for us as a government, and any government, to successfully combat the pervasiveness of drugs. It's evidence that the thousands of drug laws on the books have not prevented people from taking drugs, from acquiring drugs, and sadly, from abusing drugs. The thousands of drug laws in the books didn't stop the meth head from killing that young man on Herndon while he was on his way to work about two weeks ago, and his name escapes me. I apologize for that. The law could not protect him, and that's a tragedy. I don't believe, I mean, of course, Councilmember Brand brings good stuff to this council. Councilmember Brand is an asset and a treasure to have on this body, and I appreciate all of his hard work on this, but I don't believe the law will dissuade anyone from using drugs or from making our parks or our city properties safer. The problem of drugs is a medical issue best dealt with physicians and mental health professionals. New strategies are needed for dealing with this grave social problem. Adding yet another law to the thousands of drug laws is not the answer, and I urge a no vote today. Thank you for your time, everyone.
Councilman Baines.
I have to agree with some of what my friend Clint Olivier said. I don't necessarily see the need for this. If a police officer goes into a park or on city property and someone's smoking marijuana, or for that matter, any other controlled substance, they have more than enough tools to make an arrest. So, I'm really going to leave it at that. Without some convincing, compelling reason why we need to add a municipal code to further police power, I probably won't be supportive today. But I do absolutely agree, Member Brand, that you are an absolute treasure, and we all, we all feel the same way. So, but I won't be supporting this today.
Councilman Brand.
Let me respond in a treasured way. You know, you're seeing philosophically, a libertarian point of view, which I respect, versus a more pragmatic, you know, get-the-job-done, nuts-and-bulls kind of answer. And there are existing laws out there, set federal and state, and that's the whole issue. There's a lot of ambiguity. And I believe, in this case, we're trying to resolve some of this ambiguity. And I believe, and when it comes to the health and safety of this community, redundancy is not, is okay. That you're talking about somebody using Vicodin and marijuana. First of all, I don't think people go to concerts or other events, and when they're taking Vicodin so I can get a better experience. People are probably using Vicodin, use it because it's illegal. And I had an event in my district, and it didn't happen in anybody's district, where there's hundreds of people there celebrating the use of marijuana, more power to them. And there's families there, and picnics, and children. And if you take a pill, nobody knows about it. You're smoking it, the smoke is going everywhere, and there's pollution everywhere. And this does differ in the sense that the state that it allows, in addition to law enforcement, it allows city parks directors, other staff, to issue administrative citations. And the whole talk about alcohol, I wouldn't disagree, but that's a totally separate issue, separate and apart from what we're dealing with. And I want one person on this council to tell me that the growing and cultivation of marijuana has not caused criminal activity and people being died. This, there's a direct correlation to this, what goes on. That's why we sat here as a council here earlier this year and made some changes in our existing ordinance on cultivation because of these same problems. And I think this is making a statement that instead of calling to the interest of a few people, and I respect everybody and their rights to do what they have to do, to the vast interest of vast interest of our citizens, to send a message that we care about them, we're willing to go the extra yard to make this a safe, drug-free environment and not, you know, everything's okay, smoke what you want, drink what you want. I think it makes a big statement to this city council, and again, I don't believe, in this specific case, given the background and the history, that redundancy, and I think, I've went through this, I've had the city attorney go through this, this clarifies a lot of those issues. Would it move it overnight? No. But it's a small step in a direction we need to go as a society, on a city that has more than its fair share of issues regarding drugs. Thank you.
Councilman Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President. You know, being a former Deputy Attorney General and a former homicide prosecutor with the DA's office here in Fresno, I have a lot of faith and trust in our law enforcement and their ability to clarify ambiguities and make sure that family settings in the park are honored, and I think they have enough tools to go forward and enforce the law. And as a result of that, I don't think they need another thing to consider in their daily activities. So, there, I trust their ability, I've seen it, I've worked with it, I continue to support it, and I think that they have enough on their plate now to deal with, and adding this would not be beneficial. So, I will not be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Councilman Olivier.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to take a quick opportunity here to respond to a little bit of what Councilmember Brand said, and then I'll let it go. You know, Councilmember Brand called me out for advocating a libertarian point of view. I couldn't disagree more. I'm advocating an American point of view. I'm advocating a point of view that is shared by more and more multitudes, millions of people, who are looking for new answers when it comes to the war on drugs. We heard Councilmember Brand talk about, "We need another law. We need to show the people that we care." All levels of government are carrying people to death. And in this case, we have heard from our city attorney that it's illegal to do drugs in our parks and on city property. We've heard from former Officer Baines that you can eject a druggie out of a park right now, it's within the officer's rights, making this a redundant ordinance. The police can write tickets. There is a correlation between the marijuana grows that are infesting our city and crime. And that's prohibition. And without publicly voicing my opinion on drug prohibition, there's a direct coalition, correlation between creating a black market for something and then running around trying to stamp out the black market. So, the final thing I would like to respond to is that I'm kowtowing to a special interest. I have never received money from the, from big marijuana, and I have never cartels or pot lobbies, and I am just voicing what I believe is right, and good people can disagree. But as we move forward through this debate, and especially today, I, you know, I thank the council members who believe that we don't, we don't need more laws, that we need new strategies for dealing with drugs and drug use in our community. Thank you.
Councilman Quintero.
City Attorney, what does this bill do that we don't already have?
This bill does a couple of things that current law would not address. This allows, in addition to police officers, directors to enforce the law, this ordinance, it would allow an administrative citation as opposed to a criminal citation. It would allow...
Could you say that again, please? It allows an administrative...
An administrative citation? In other words, you don't have to go to Superior Court, you would come in to the administrative hearing officer here at City Hall.
So, they wouldn't have to go to court?
Not to Superior Court, that's correct. It'd just be our administrative hearing process.
Under this bill?
Yes. It allows specifically the directors or police officers to ask violators to leave the park, and it provides that upon three violations within 12 months, that person can be banned from parks for an additional 12 months.
So, they can ask them to leave the park, this new one asks them to leave the park?
Yes, as opposed to arresting a person or citing a person, they can say, "Just leave the park."
But don't they have that option already?
Not necessarily, no. The police officer's options may be to cite or arrest, but they would have to gain voluntary compliance to simply leave.
So, it's like if you get pulled over on a traffic violation, the officer can say, "Don't do it again, be a good driver," or they can give you a citation?
Yes, that would be some discretion that would be allowed, yes.
So, they can use their discretion in the park under this, this one that gives them the discretion?
Right. This one would give them the authority to require them to leave the park as opposed to the discretion to gain voluntary compliance to leave the park. It's a subtle difference, but there is a legal difference.
Not that big of a difference, then?
Because right now, if a police officer encountered somebody consuming marijuana in a park, they can say, "Leave the park." If the person says no, then the only other option is to arrest them. Whereas this gives specifically authority to require the person to leave the park.
And what?
I'm just saying, you asked about the differences, and that is a difference.
Okay. Do you see that big of a difference in both of them?
What it does, it allows a lesser level of enforcement as opposed to being, having to step up enforcement to the level of citing or arresting. It allows for something less than that to gain compliance.
Okay. So, I guess the question is, do we want lesser enforcement or the enforcement we have now?
Right. That would be a policy call.
Very interesting. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Brand.
I can see the consternation. I don't know what you guys were smoking last night. But I, I'm going to amend my motion to continue this item to resolve these issues that were addressed today with more clarity and more vision. So, I'm going to revise my motion to continue the item to a time uncertain at this point in time to review it.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you.
All right then, we have a motion to continue the item and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Motion to continue the item passes six to one with Councilman Capriolio voting no. All right. A friendly, a treasured no. All right then. We have one item here, let's see, it's 10, it's 10 o'clock. We can't, we have a 10:10 item, Dirk, we can't, according to our rules, we can't bring you forward. We have, council members, we have about a 10-minute closed session. We have a 10-minute closed session item.
We could squeeze in the closed session or possibly unscheduled communication.
We're going to go into closed session for 10 minutes.
All right, in closed session, we have conference with real property negotiator concerning the Santa Fe lot. Also pursuant to a special meeting notice, we have closed session concerning existing litigation, City of El Centro, including City of Fresno, versus David Lanier in San Diego Superior Court.
So, Dirk, if you can approach the microphone, is that, or, no, it's, the presentation's from DARM, is that correct?
Yeah. Council President, council members, my name is Chris Prociato. I'm a planner with the City of Fresno Development and Resource Management Department. I have nothing further to add. Thank you.
All right then. So, we'll go out to any members of the public, but Dirk, that means you.
Thank you, Council President. Dirk Pushel on behalf of the applicant. The matter was heard by your planning commission, it was unanimously supported by the commission and also by your advisory committee, and is recommended by your staff, and we thank you for your support of this application.
All right, thank you, Dirk. Are there any other members of the public that'd like to comment on this item? Then I'm going to make the motion to accept staff's recommendation and approve this item. We have a motion and a second. Council members, the screen is blank, here's your last chance. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Looks like we have everybody, seven zero. Thanks for waiting, Dirk. And thank you. All right. We have unscheduled communication at this time. If there's any member of the public that would like to address any item either on or off our agenda today, please come up to the microphone. Is that, is that everything?
We're done.
All right, we are done with our meeting today. We're going to adjourn our meeting at Councilman Capriolio's request. We're going to adjourn our meeting in memory of those lost during the September 11th, 2001, attack on the World Trade Center. So, thank you very much, and we will see you in two weeks.